I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Kirstensen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobis?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo?
Here.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
We have eight members present this evening.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Hayes up first to give us a presentation on the Ben Franklin project.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. My name's Kevin Hayes. I'm with the Hayes Design Group Architects and with me is Andrew Campanaro of our office as well. So we're going to be talking about two projects tonight, one larger than the other one. The first one is going to be the renovations to Ben Franklin Elementary School, which is including a focus on HVAC upgrades. And generally speaking, this is a very similar project to what we did to George Washington last summer and then the summer before that to Neo Armstrong Middle School. With that, I'm actually going to ask Andrew to walk us through a little bit of the scope of the project and help orient everybody to the scope.
Thank you, Kevin. As Kevin alluded to, this project is very similar to what we've done in the past two summers for the district. This job will be primarily a heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and lighting replacement job for the school. The work will include some ancillary items, some design finishes, paintings, carpeting throughout the building as well. It was also similar to what we did at those other schools. There are a few key differences in the scope here versus the scope we did at those buildings. I'm going to touch on those in just a minute. If you look to the bottom of the sheet hopefully everyone has, it's the cost summary and it should say Ben Franklin at the top. All the way down to the bottom, there are two columns. The one says "Aspects Similar to George Washington" and the other says "Aspects Different." I'm just going to touch on those. The first column is "Aspects Similar." Replace all terminal equipment, which includes unit ventilators, conveyors, air handlers, all those pieces of equipment. It also includes replacing the chiller, replacing the lights, replacing all the ceilings. All the drop acoustic ceilings will be replaced. We'll cut into the classroom wing walls similarly to what we did, so it's right next to the ventilators, so we'll have the piping down again to minimize any disturbance to the building and the space to complete the renovation. We'll also have new paint and new floor finishes in the building as well. In addition to this list that's not on there is we'll also add cooling to the gymnasiums similarly to what we did at the other buildings. Doing that basically will allow the entire building to be cooled, therefore we can lock the building down during the entire school day. Doors don't have to be left open to allow, you know, air movement in the spaces. Aspects that are different from the other projects, this building is actually 5,000 square feet larger than George Washington, which is going to affect, you know, everything we're doing, which more floors, more ceilings, more painting, all those things. In addition, this project, we are adding a generator. The generator will be to service the lights, will be on the generator, and as we'll get to further down this, the sun pumps. In addition, at this school, we need to replace the boilers. We replaced the boilers at Neo Armstrong, but we did not do it at George Washington. The boilers there were in good shape, so this is in addition to that for the school. We are also replacing the gymnasium floor. That was not part of the scope we did at George Washington, although the district ended up doing it themselves after the fact. We are also looking in addition here, at the main entrance to the building, we are going to create a secure vestibule. So essentially we'll create a mousetrap where a visitor during the school hours will have to enter through the office to actually get into the school. Right now, a visitor to get to the office has to go into the school and then the office. This will force a visitor to have to check in before just being able to free run the building.
Andrew, sorry, I just wanted, if I could interrupt you there just for a second. Ben Franklin, we, it's always our goal to try to create a mousetrap to force everybody in the office. A lot of our buildings are not structured to be able to do that. Ben Franklin does have a structure that permits us to at least consider it in this proposal because the door is so close to the office. So it's not a lot of, a lot of work that needs done there, but it is some, and we thought we'd take advantage of it because it is able to be done there.
Sorry, Andrew. No, not a problem, not a problem. In addition, there's a little bit of stormwater drainage issue behind the building, so we'll be addressing that as part of this. And the existing chiller that's going to be replaced is smaller than the new one that's planned for the building, so we need to increase CPAD area, so we need to build a retaining wall as there's some earth that needs to be moved to accommodate that space. A couple of items not on the list that I also want to mention, the hot and cold water piping for this HVAC system will actually be able to remain for the most part. There are some areas we'll need to replace such as the boiler room, but the runs down quarters will be able to stay into the classroom. We will need to replace the insulation on the cold water piping though as part of this work. In addition on this job, there are eight new rooftop units. Those units will service specific spaces that didn't have a great deal of control before. They were always hot or cold because they were how they're sequenced with other spaces in the building. So those units will allow greater control in each of the spaces to help keep thermal comfort and that also hopefully reduce energy. And then the last item that I want to talk about was replacing the two sun pumps in the boiler room. That will be done as part of the scope and those will also be put on the generators. These generators proposed to be added. Are there any questions on the scope items I just mentioned?
Yeah, when you talk about the gym floor, would you get different bids? Now, I think that's a hardwood floor, whereas at Washington we put in a...
Washington has a rubber floor.
Yeah.
It's a cord rubber floor. Actually, it's the same type of floor at Ben Franklin, it's just older, but it's actually worn through in areas. So we'd be looking at taking off the surface of that floor and putting a new cord rubber over top of it.
So it would be the same.
So it would look just like one at George Washington.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right, then I'll move on. If you, same document we just talked about, we're going to go to the top of the document and we'll work down to the costs. We're going to start off with a hard cost for construction. The first item you'll see is the conceptual opinion of probably major work item cost. This is the actual physical construction of everything we just talked about and proposed in the building. That's listed at $2,580,000. We're carrying a design contingency this time of 3%. We feel at this moment we have a pretty strong handle on the scope we're talking about. We've gone through it and talked to district personnel through several meetings, making sure all are in agreement on the scope of work and show. In addition to that, we're carrying a cost for train management fee, 15%. This would be a maximum amount. If you recall last time with George Washington, we did a procurement process called the procurement network through Train, and they provided all, the entire package for the district. And this is a fee upfront that would be negotiated by the district with Train. Again, it's a maximum amount, it's being discussed.
Can you refresh the memories for me and perhaps some of the other board members of what the management fee was the last time for Train because we can recall that they... Well, some things were maybe not as frugal as we would have liked to have seen in the end.
Sure. Essentially, the last time, many of the fees that Train charged for their services on the project were not identified clearly and knowingly upfront. And so there were some surprises after the district chose to commit to the TCNP project utilizing Train as the single prime contractor. And so I think everybody learned something through that process. And this time around, everything's being talked up upfront. So before any final commitment is being made to Train or with, going with the TCNP program, all costs are going to be known by the district.
What were the, what were the fees the last time, if you recall?
Off the top, I don't know the total. I was going to say, Matt?
I don't have that number, David, in front of me yet, but I can definitely get that to the board.
Please do.
But I can't, what we can say is that the number listed is much less than last time. I just, I don't know what the exact number was.
Okay.
And then I'll just take you through, then the next number in the construction cost category would be the construction contingency at 10%. And the construction contingency differs from the design contingency in that the construction contingency is meant to be a budget number for items that might not be known when we actually start construction, but may be discovered during construction. These, you know, in a building the age of Ben Franklin, there may be pipes or conduits or other such things hidden in the walls that we aren't aware of because we, we have design drawings but not as-built drawings for that project. So this just is a contingency. And the idea behind the contingencies is to try to establish a conservative budget for the project such that the cost of the project can be managed within that and that you and the taxpayers aren't going to be surprised, you know, by overruns and stuff like that. So that, so all told, those are all the construction costs, and the total of that at this time in the budget is $3,330,000. So is there any question, other questions about the hard costs or the construction costs? Okay. With that, we're going to just review with you the soft costs.
The soft costs for this project, the first line item you'll see is the architectural and professional engineering fees. For this, for this project, it will include structural, civil, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering besides architectural services. They total $260,000. In addition to that, there are variable costs for this project. This is very similar to what was also at George Washington in NAMs, storage trailers for the furniture within the building, so it can be moved out of the way and then stored somewhere. If you're familiar with Ben Franklin's site, there isn't a great deal of parking that may need to occur off-site, but that's being worked on, but this is the budget item for that. In addition, the district last summer did quite a bit of painting on their own to those spaces. This is again, is a budget for that painting that would occur also in Ben Franklin. Similarly, at George Washington, there was a allowance or a budget for furniture, for classrooms, teachers' desks, cafeteria, whatever's needed in the building, and it's just a budget, and they'll replace what's needed based on that. In addition, there is a budget item for new flooring, very similarly to what we did that's outside of the rest of the scope. This would be carpeting and VCT. VCT in this instance would be in the office area as much as planned. Any questions on any of the variable costs or other soft costs? All right, moving on. On top of that, there are related project costs. This includes project printing and the construction manager. The, both of these are just budgets. And then the final one you'll see there is building permit. I want to touch on this. This is very similar to what was done at both George Washington and NAMs. Bethel Park did not charge anything for permitting these projects as they were considered prepared. We anticipate that to be similar, and that, that right now is being carried as zero. The total for the related project costs of permanent construction manager is listed at $35,000. Any questions on any of the related project costs?
I had just one question on the, on the architectural and building engineering fee. So the, you know, I think I understand what that is, but is the design contingency fee really in a, really to supplement that?
Yes.
You know, the design contingency sounds like an engineering services fee.
It does sound like it is, but it's not. The design contingency is meant to cover the cost of the construction of scope of work items that are not yet in the project, but during construction documents, as we go through and develop the designs in more detail, there's sometimes scope that has to be added. For instance, as we go through and finalize the engineering on the system, there might be an extra pump that needs to be added that we don't have in the cost right now. The design contingency is meant to cover those numbers.
Okay, is additional hardware or construction costs as a result of design changes?
That's right, or additions as we finalize the design in the project.
Okay.
Sure. So with the, with the hard costs, which are the construction costs, and the soft costs, which primarily are the architectural and engineering fees along with the variable costs we talked about, if you order before midnight tonight, the cost will be $3,905,000. We also want to talk to the board about a few alternates that may be added or taken from the scope of the work, and this just gives you some bidding flexibility so that if, for, if for instance, the bids were to come in a little high, you have the opportunity to take the deduct alternate, which would be to delete a new ceiling grid perimeter angle and instead keep the existing. And that would be a deduct of $10,000, we estimated about $10,000. And again, something we wouldn't recommend doing, we, we actually kept the existing perimeter walls. When you have a lay-in ceiling, right, the grid ceilings that you see in buildings, around the edge, there's a little L angle that goes all around the edge, it catches the ceiling at the edge. We kept that in both the NAMs project and the George Washington project, and it was somewhat successful. I mean, you can't really notice it too much, but it, it wasn't as successful as we like. And so right now, we're including in the base bid, removing all of that and putting new in, along with the new ceiling grid that we'll be putting in. But again, if there's a need to save some money when bids come in, we have that. Then there are two add alternates, meaning if we, if the bids are competitive, and again, it's hard to know what the bidding environment's going to be next spring, but if the bids are competitive and it actually comes in under budget, at that point, we'd offer to the board the opportunity of considering adding these two scope items, which is, the first would be replacing and installing new acoustical treatments in the gymnasium. The gyms tend to be loud, and if, again, if it can be afforded, putting some acoustical treatment to lower the din or the, you know, the echoing in the gyms is recommended. And the other would be replace the toilet partitions in the restrooms. Right now, they're in okay condition, fair, good condition. Again, if money was available and the bids were competitive and there was extra money, we would recommend the board consider that alternate. So with the alternates, both the add and deletes, the, the total of those is actually an add of $32,000. So if you took the $3,905,000 and you added the alternates, you would get $3,937,000. So right now, at the end of the design phase, that's the probable cost that we're presenting to the board and asking the board to approve.
Do you just, I think I've asked this with the other projects you do. Do you have a, like, estimate of the anticipated savings through efficiencies we're going to gather through yearly through the new system? Is there a way to estimate that?
Yeah, we, we can talk about it. I mean, what, what you're going, I mean, there is no doubt you're going to see savings. I mean, right now, we, we would expect that you're going to probably see a 10 to 15% efficiency gain on your heating bills and your cooling, and you're, and, and that's conservative. And then you're going to see a dramatic increase in your electrical savings because we're taking fluorescent fixtures, which generally if you look at it, you'd say, you know, four bulb, 32 watt, you're roughly, you know, 130 watts per lamp, and we're going to replace that with LED, which we're going to use about 40 watts per lamp, or per fixture. So it's dramatic in terms of that. In terms of what, what that translates money-wise, I, I don't know. I'm going to put, Mr. Howard and Mr. Carrazzi, on, have we seen any, you know, have you seen any numbers from NAMs or thus far?
All I know is, I know they're less, but we actually talked about this a little bit, but we'll, we'll try to get the board some of that information for sure, at least on NAMs and what we've seen so far in Washington.
But, uh...
But it's definitely, the bills are definitely lower at both places.
Yes.
And I'm, and I'm, the other thing is then, I'm not sure about how much labor we were putting into maintaining the old system, but should we see some reduction there? I don't know how many hours. Do you have an idea of how many hours we were putting in versus how many we're going to need to maintain the system?
Like, I'm going to let Bill talk a little bit about just the lighting and the fact that we're not climbing on ladders and doing all that anymore, and Johnny can talk a little bit about how many hours he's been over Franklin, which I know has been a lot, especially in the heat, in the cooling season, so. But we're definitely not changing light bulbs. Bill, I mean, you have a...
Our reduction in changing light bulbs is really probably about 30 to 40% less than we've always done based on the new LED type of lights, okay? We've had some minor glitches with them as far as just, just little things, as far as maybe some warranties and little odds and ends. In fact, trace was up there today dealing with some, some issues, but you're talking about 30, 40% as far as just climbing on the ladders and replacement labor costs and of course, you know, armpit custodians or the maintenance men, it may be up that high to do it. Plus, we're finding that we're not cleaning the fixtures as much also, and that, and that is a reduction in reading, I mean, your lighting costs too.
As far as the heating and air conditioning, considerable amounts, but to maintain it, it still has to be maintained, it has to be serviced, you know, taken care of, but a considerable amount of, you know, labor will be saved by not having to repair it all. Plus, the energy will be, you know, by going direct digital control, it'll be massive because, you know, you can control it from anywhere. There's a lot of cuts that I've made on the schedules and stuff to really cut the, you know, cut the fuels, all the electric back. We're working more at that even at the high school. Since it's been done, I've even cut more back on that. We're going to try for more even yet, you know, to get that done. But, you know, really, it's a lot of maintenance, a lot of bad boilers, motors, piping, not piping, but bricks and stuff that we have that are going to be gone, yeah, so.
That was my assumption, I just wanted to make sure I was assuming correctly. Right, thank you.
Really, any other questions then?
I guess I'm stuck on this gym floor. The gym floor is not a part of the budget it's saying, so we don't have that addressed anywhere in here, but we're, we're going to replace the gym floor, that's all we know? Is that...
No. The gym floor is part of the budget, and in this, in Ben Franklin, it's part of the base budget. At George Washington, it wasn't.
Okay, because that, under variable costs, it says note, gym floor is not a part of budget. What does that mean?
We could have written that better. It's not, it's not a variable cost.
Okay, oh, okay, so we, we haven't, we haven't...
Ben Franklin, it's going to be in the base bid of work that's going to be bid to the contractors.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
All right.
I think I was...
We, we just wanted to make sure the board was reading this. Well done.
I think the reason we clarified is because at Washington, it was part of that $170,000, and here it's going to be part of the base bid.
Part of the base bid, all right. That was a little confusing to read it that way, though. Thanks.
I have one question.
Please.
Like, we see out there in the public with a lot of these contractors, like these cost overruns, which I know you, you alluded a little bit about the piping behind walls and things like that, but then there's also the delay on getting projects done too, or is there any kind of protection or anything like that with schools, and we need to make sure that things are done on time? Is there something built into this? I don't see, I'm new here too.
Sure, sure. Two, two thoughts. Most of the time, at least in our experience, what's cost overruns is because people were too optimistic when they developed the budgets, and they really didn't include enough thought and consideration to various aspects of the project, and then they get added when you go from design, schematic design, to design development, to construction document, because you're adding information all the time to the, to the scope of work before it goes out to bid. We try to be pretty conservative, and so we've gotten certain contingencies built in for what we don't know, and then this design contingency is part of that. In terms of schedule, we really, we manage that starting in the summer in terms of beginning the work on this project such that we can go out to bid. The expectation is we're going to be going out to bid in early February. You're then, that positions the district to have this project, which is not a large project, right in the sweet spot for the contractors looking to line up their summer work. And so we're going to be up first, and when you're up first, you get the better bids because contractors are interested in locking in a good portion of their summer work upfront. It's when you go to bid in the school market, you know, in late March, April, where you're starting, you know, other contractors now have left the playing field, so to speak, in terms of bidding, because they've locked up their jobs, and, and you're just getting people who are bidding because, well, we'll take it if we can get it at a, at a premium, and your, and your prices go high. So I think the, the key to managing the, the budget from that standpoint is get out to bid early and do it when you need to do it. So again, I think the, the district deserves credit that you've lined up these projects in the last several years, knowing that we want to go out, and I will say this is probably the last year you're going to see real competitive bidding. We're actually a little bit concerned. I mean, the economy is improving, we're seeing less, less competition in the marketplace. We've benefited that the last two years in the NAMs project and in the George Washington project, and we're hoping, again, by going out to bid soon enough this year, that we'll still be able to get good competitive bidding. I think you're going to see later this year and into 2017, a definite inflation increase in bidding projects.
See, I had just one question on the, a little bit related to Ron, that's on the, you mentioned in looking at the scope of work, it's a little bit bigger than, than Washington. Is this a project that can get done over the summer? You know, the, the last project, I think, kind of ran right up to the start of school, you know, and here you're putting in boilers and, you know, some extra work you've identified. Is this still a summer project or a single summer project?
That's a very good question, and, and the, the short answer is yes. It, it has taken a little bit more care, if you would, in terms of how we're structuring it, and we, and again, getting started a little sooner has helped us on the district side and the design side, working with the district as well as Mr. Kramer in lining up how are we going to get, you know, into the boiler room, how are we going to be able to take certain things offline as soon as possible, get things ordered in time. That's taken a little bit more attention, but we still, yeah, we think this is very doable.
Okay.
And one, one other thought from Mr. Kramer.
I just asked, wanted to ask too, and relative to the question regarding the calendar, do you see us needing to adjust the start date of next school year?
At this point, we do not.
No, okay. Thank you.
I was going to ask, is this going to entail shutting off the air conditioning before school's at?
We would, we would like to do that. I talked to the principal about it, I'm going to leave, but there's some more about it. That gives you, even if you give it three weeks, that's huge because we can start earlier. The boiler room will be easy because we can get in from the back, you know, but the air conditioning, giving that up a little bit early is huge, especially, you know, due to the fact that we can have the chiller room, got it, the boiler, the boiler room, the chiller is in the boiler room, so we can, a lot of the, a lot of the work in that building is going to be removal of the equipment. I don't know if it's a bit in that building, but it's down in a hole down at the bottom of the building, and has every single piece will have to be lifted, put on a decking, and then go out the back of the building. So it's going to be a lot of time to get a lot of heavy stuff out of there. We have talked to the principal, I mean, generally speaking, most of the kids are more flexible than the teachers. But that said, I mean, there are certain kids with certain, you know, respiratory, et cetera. There will be areas in the building that will remain air conditioned, if they're on package units, they're not on the central chiller. If need be, certain provisions will be made for kids who need that to, to handle that.
Well, I'm not opposed to doing that if it's necessary. I went through school, I never had air conditioning, but I just want everybody to realize if you shut the air conditioning off and it's warm, there's going to be a lot of complaints.
Do the windows in that building open?
Yes.
At least a year, yeah.
There's no doubt, we'll get a 94-degree day. That'll be our luck.
And you had mentioned about checking things. On Mr. Howard's desk, there's a section of pipe, I've cut several sections of the pipe up just to ensure that we don't get anything surprise. You know, we had a testing company come in, they checked, plus they checked the meter, but just for our own knowledge, I went over and I cut chunks out and I cut the copper, you know, checked the piping. you know, checked the piping, so that we wouldn't, you know, get into this and have a massive surprise, you know? Like I said, if you'd like to see that, that section, it's on Mr. Howard's desk, so.
And again, what, what Mr. Kramer's coming by is, we, we look to save money for the district by reusing the existing pipe, and, and it's definitely able to be done, but you have to make sure that the pipe's in good condition. And, and again, thanks to Mr. Kramer and his staff for, again, you know, they shut the system, they drained it, and they cut it, in order to make sure that, that we're in good shape, so.
Didn't wanna trust the meter, you know, I mean, just, it was something we wanted to put our eyes on. I mean, if the meter came up good, but we wanted to make sure that, just didn't wanna trust it.
Better safe than sorry.
Mr. Howard, could you explain to the public how we're gonna pay for this?
Sure, I think, we, we've been establishing a capital reserve fund that we've established over the last ten years or so here at, at Bethel Park. We've, we've taken opportunities to replenish that fund when, when we're able to, you know, through monies in the general fund. So, currently, we, we're, we have about, right around six million dollars to work with moving into this project, so we would be able to fund this project through the capital reserve account.
And for the record, the capital reserve fund is a portion of the budget which is set aside specifically for these types of improvements.
Correct. We, we don't use any of our capital reserve fund for the normal operations, the day-to-day operations of the district. We, we have, Kevin has a page two, there's two other small, little projects that we'll briefly go over.
That's right, but wait, if you order before midnight tonight, you also can get a second. This is a smaller project, but, but just as important, and it is, it is supplemental renovations at Neil Armstrong Middle School. Again, we had renovated the interior of the building, and renovated the HVAC system, et cetera, two years ago, but, but at this point, there are some exterior work. There is replacement of the domestic water line and service, there have just been issues over the last two years, and it's just time to take that bull by the horns and, and address it. And then, also, the installation of conduit for the exterior electrical wiring, like many other projects around the area. Over time, essentially just the wetness of the ground and the conduit in the ground, carrying the wiring for the electrical, exterior electrical lighting, you know, has, has, has been attacked by, you know, the water and ground, and it just has, has wrought, has rusted and, and now needs to be replaced. So, the conceptual opinion of probable cost is about two hundred thousand dollars, and again, we are still carrying a design contingency and a construction contingency. The total of those will be about forty thousand dollars, so we have the total hard costs at about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. To that, the engineering fees related to that are about twenty thousand dollars. The printing, construction managers, actually, we will not have a construction manager on this project, it's included, the, the minimal amount of work for that is actually included in the budget for the project manager on the Ben Franklin project, and the printing cost is about twenty-five hundred dollars. So, all told, the opinion of probable cost would be about two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. We, we also have some alternates in this project that we'll be bidding, again, in, in the hope, and in the event that the bids come in very lower than the budget. The first o, o option would be replace the existing fire hydrant. That was request of all the dogs that, or walked, no, just kidding.
So, we're responsible for a fire hydrant?
What's that?
Not the water company, we're responsible for the fire hydrant.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes, you are.
On your property.
Yeah.
On your property, you're responsible for a fire hydrant.
Right. And then, the other would be just a new meter pit, a meter and a backflow preventer. That's a little higher number, thirty thousand dollars. So, the alternates total thirty-seven thousand dollars. If you, if you add those to the probable cost, you get a total budget of about two hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I'd like to clarify, the second alternate for the meter pit, it may not yet be an alternate, we're in negotiation, discussions in mass awareness with Bethel Park. They may provide a meter pit. So, that's ongoing.
I have a question for you regarding the, the design contingency. For this smaller project, it said five percent, and the other one was three percent, can you-
Sure, it, it's just, it's more of a relative number, you know, the, you know, if, if made three percent, it'd be six thousand dollars. It's, it's all relative, but we just felt like, given, given the scope of this project, the, the ten thousand dollar figure felt better. I'd be that way about it, you know, half, half art, half science here. It's just a matter of making sure that if, if we are still doing some investigations into the conditions, et cetera, we just wanted to have enough money to cover something that could be added.
Okay. Okay. Would you refresh my memory, what's the purpose of the conduit for the exterior electrical wiring?
The purpose?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's protecting the wiring, and, and it's required by code to have the, the wiring inside a conduit.
This is-
This is underground wiring that's going-
Yeah, this is the underground, underground wiring between the exterior lights that are there. So, you have some-
So, we're upgrading what's there to meet code?
Well, you're, you're just fixing what's there. That, we're, we're getting some ground faults in the wiring, and, and when the investigation was done, some of the, what was investigated showed that there was cracks in the conduit and, and some deterioration of the conduit, which would, you know, again, you can surmise from that, that that's also occurring in the rest of the lines that are out there.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, so we're just gonna be digging it up and replacing it, making it safer.
And then, also, within that, there are a few light bulbs that will be replaced as well, that will knock down a bit, so they'll go back up like the original design had.
When will you be scheduling this project?
This will be for the summer as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Okay, I am going to move to staff report. Because I'm, because I'm, I'm sorry, because I'm going to do the other part as part of my business meeting, so I'm gonna skip down this one a little bit.
Gladly. Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Cook and the board, normally, we don't have a good news report to share for December, since this meeting is so close to our November meeting, but so many great things have happened since our last report to you in November, that we didn't want to wait to share this information with you in January. Seven Bethel Park school, high school musicians successfully auditioned, wait a minute. There we go. Seven Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and have been selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District Orchestra Concert, which will be held in January at Upper St. Clair. Congratulations to Joshua Anashenko, Emily Kouser, Grace Evans, Jacob Lissick, Ethan Tabler, Joseph Wasco, and Julian Wu. Bethel Park High School students Jack Brownfield, Sean McLean, and Akil Rajeshkar defeated students from Albert Gellington and McGuffey High Schools on KDKA's TV's Hometown High Q program, which aired, which will air on Saturday, December twelfth, at eleven-thirty a.m. The team will advance to the playoffs sometime in 2016. Congratulations to the team, and good luck as they advance in the competition. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Grant Wilson its November Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes Bethel Park High School students for outstanding commitment to school and/or community. Grant was recognized for his efforts to coordinate the Veterans Day fundraiser at the high school to benefit the Wounded Warrior Project, as well as his work to collect books for the Allegheny County Courthouse waiting room, and selling YUDA brace, band bracelets to help raise tuition money so children in third world countries can go to school. Grant also volunteers at St. Clair Hospital. Congratulations, Grant, and keep up the great work. A group of twenty-seven Bethel Park High School students are participating in the Sea Perch Project. Sea Perch is a United States Navy-sponsored robotics project that will culminate in a competition at Carnegie Mellon University in February. The students who are participating in this project include Mr. Shostotsky's Computer Integrated Manufacturing Class, Mrs. Rob's gifted students, and Mrs. Smuler's marketing students. The students meet in groups of three or four every other Friday for two periods to work together to build a robot that will float in water, go forward and backward, as well as up and down in the water. There are seven teams building these robots. Materials for the robot are standard and are provided by the Sea Perch Program. The students are challenged to construct the robot from scratch out of the PVC materials. They have to waterproof three engines and figure out where to install them, as well as solder, assemble the remote control, and add trim to their robot. Their robots will be complete, will be completed, and they will be tested at the high school swimming pool, with the best robot advancing to the regional competition at CMU in February. Mr. Shostotsky sees this project as a great enhancement to the computer-integrated manufacturing curriculum, and when other students heard of the program, he was more than happy to encourage their participation in the project as well. Good luck to the students. To show that STEAM concepts also apply to English, students in Mr. Travis's English Ten classes at Bethel Park High School went on a hero's journey and created a paper circuitry LED light op art gallery to depict the journey. Students learned about the hero's journey, a pattern of narrative identified by American scholar Joseph Campbell that appears in the drama, storytelling, myth, religious ritual, and psychological development. He describes the typical adventure of an archetype known as the hero, the person who goes out and achieves great deeds on behalf of the group, tribe, or civilization. There are several parts to the journey, including the call to adventure, refusal of the call, meeting with the mentor, the ordeal, the reward, and the road back. Mr. Travis's students worked in pairs to find a colored photo on the internet that represented one of the journey's parts. Then, they wired the images with copper tape placed behind the image to light up the most important aspect of the photo when connected to alligator clip batteries. All four of Mr. Travis's classes mounted their photos and created four gallery exhibits. Accompany each of the photos were two rationales written by the students, one explaining why they chose this particular picture, and the other explaining why they placed the light where they did. Students in all of Mr. Travis's classes then had the opportunity to look at all of the interactive gallery photos to vote for their favorite in each phase of the journey. Students also had the opportunity to create a Google presentation that described their own hero's journey, and they shared these presentations with their classmates. Bethel Park High School's English teacher, Mr. Youngs, and Mr. Travis recently shared this project with interested English teachers across the country at the National Council of Teachers of English Annual Conference. A hundred and twenty-one Bethel Park High School Honors Precalculus and AP Statistics students worked together on a three-day activity involving regression and how data will predict trends. To get the project started, gifted students at the high school ran timed interval experiments to see how temperatures changed in coffee that was poured into Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts cups. Students worked in small groups and looked at the data and plotted it on scatter plots by using the regression model on a graphing calculator or their Chromebooks. Following two days of data analysis, the students created a five-minute presentation, which they delivered to their classmates on the third day. This exercise gave the students a small taste of how big data is used in marketing. The students also will be able to use these data skills in biology class when they study bacteria growth, and in chemistry class when they observe how things decay. This year, the Bethel Park High School DECA is supporting the Ronald McDonald House of Pittsburgh. Students Sammy Schweitzer, Courtney Maslanka, and Paige Swindle hosted a video night at the house, showing the movie Inside Out and bringing snacks to the event. Student in Mrs. Smuler's and Mrs. Christensen's classes recently collected enough items to fill forty welcome and busy bags, and twenty-five snack bags for the Ronald McDonald House. The two hundred DECA collected from their annual Thanksgiving pie sale will also go to the Ronald McDonald House. In other DECA knows, students Paige Davidson and Maria Schiller interviewed seven local business owners about the importance of shopping local this holiday season, and the interviews were filmed for broadcast on BPTV. We thank local business owners Andy Emride, Raymond Piacuadio, John Walsh, Robert Taylor, Kim Schaefer, and Dr. Anita Chikon, and Jack Allen for taking time from their busy schedules to speak with our students. This project is an extension of the program developed last year by the DECA students of the Bethel, and the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce, and we are pleased to be partnering again with the chamber on this worthwhile endeavor. Just a reminder to everyone, please support local business, Bethel Park businesses this year when you are doing your holiday shopping. Thank you. Bethel Park High School German students have been selected to participate in the two thousand fifteen sixteen Balles Slegio Total. Balles Slegio Total is an interactive fantasy soccer league sponsored by Gothor Institute of San Francisco as part of its Step Into German campaign. From November two thousand fifteen through May two thousand sixteen, members of the Bethel Park High School German club will make predictions and research answers to trivia questions pertaining to select professional soccer matches in the German Bostaglia. Prior to each match, the students must predict the winning club and the score, as well as whether or not particular players will score a goal if there, it will be a, or there will be a penalty kick or red card given during the match. After the match, the students will use their Chromebooks to watch highlight videos provided by the Goth Institute, and answer questions based on the match stats, commentary, and post-game interviews, all of which are in German. The eighteen participating schools will be awarded points based on the accuracy of their answers and are ranked in standings table. All of, at the end of the season, the winning school will receive special prizes, and all of the participating schools will receive prizes for their participation. The team is captained by junior Ryan Fob, who is a BPHS varsity soccer player and AP German four student. Our German students will compete against schools from Pennsylvania, Ohio, Maine, New Hampshire, New, North Carolina, California, Washington, Minnesota, Illinois, Wyoming, Colorado, Georgia, Tennessee, Canada, and Mexico. Students who all have participated to date include Julia Ignati, Jonathan Lucchetti, Jen Clara, Ethan Tabler, Brendan Troche, Evan Aaronholt, Vincent Ventasio, Holly Troche, and Evan Walsh. Bethel Park School District students remembered our veterans on Veterans Day in different ways. Besides our high school students collecting money for the Wounded Warrior Project, Independence Middle School student council students, and the students in the Bring a Smile to the Service Group invited area veterans to school on Veterans Day to enjoy either a pancake and sausage breakfast, or a coffee and cookies reception in the library. Memorial third graders in Mr. August's room worked with Operation Gratitude to collect items to be sent to soldiers in care packages. The students accompanied, accompanied their donations with letters of encouragement. Lincoln third graders in Mrs. DeBals' room painted unused wooden pallets, transforming them into American flags, which will be installed permanently in the school's entrance. We thank all of our students and teachers for helping our students to better understand and appreciate the service and sacrifices of our veterans. For the sixteenth year, Neil Armstrong Middle School students raised money to purchase presents for the South Hills Interfaith Ministries Angel Emporium, which provides holiday presents to needy families in the South Hills. This year, NAMS students, families, and staff raised a record nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and were able to purchase many gifts with that money. As they always have, students work together by shopping in small groups with a set amount of money for a particular demographic, such as a parent, grandparent, or infant. They had to use their math skills to decide whether to spend their money in one or two larger gifts, or to use their money wisely to purchase as many things as they could with the amount they were given. Then, the students delivered their gifts to SHIM so they could see how the Angel Emporium works and to learn more about what the SHIM does for the community. Neil Armstrong Middle School is the largest supporter of the Angel Emporium Project, and we're extremely proud of what we have done over the years to make the holidays brighter for area families. Lincoln librarian Denise Pesekanix has partnered with WQED to provide our students with a voluntary once-a-month after-school activity to improve their reading and math skills. This program partners third and fourth grade mentors with first and second grade students. The students stay after school once a month and watch a video from PBS, either about Martha Bedawg, who helps with language arts skills, or Peg Plus Cat, which does, deals with math skills. After the video, the younger students pair up with the older student to participate in three projects. In the last language arts session, students did book buddy paired reading, journal writing, and interviews, which helped to build their vocabulary skills. All of the materials were provided at no cost to the school by WQED, and the students also get some take-home materials to work on as well. We thank Mrs. Pesekanix and first grade teacher Mrs. Dowd for helping to make this program, which involves forty Lincoln students, a success. Originally, they were hoping for thirty students to participate, but the interest was high, and they made sure that everyone who wanted to be part of this program was included. Franklin Elementary School was pleased to welcome Violet Mutta- Franklin Elementary School was pleased to welcome Violet Mutasa, a teacher from Zimbabwe. Ms. Mutasa teaches reading at the Nidiri Primary School in Zimbabwe, a school where the majority of the students are orphans. During her three-month stay in Pittsburgh, she visited Franklin for a day to learn more about how she could improve instruction in her own classroom. She spent time with teacher Katie Mucci to learn about differentiated learning options for students to choose from, including technology. Lindsay Crowley to observe technology-based learning, and Tracy Galloway to observe small group instruction. She also visited Susan Vigetti's kindergarten classroom and enjoyed having the children sing Veterans Day patriotic songs to her. Ms. Mutasa was impressed that kindergarten is a grade in which Bethel Park students receive formal instruction in reading. She was also impressed by the technology. While she was in Bethel Park, she also worked with the Bethel Park High School students Emily Russell and Carissa Colfield, which coordinated a district-wide collection of toiletries and school supplies for the African orphans. We were pleased to be able to host Violet, as several of our schools and employees still send backpacks filled with school supplies to the school through United Christ Methodist Church. On January 22nd, five Bethel Park graduates will be inducted into the Bethel Park Great Alumni Hall of Fame. This year's inductees include 1964 graduate William Flynn, 1978 graduate Gilbert L. Smith, Jr., 1975 graduate Naomi Nancy Halas, 1963 graduate Richard Joel, and 1977 graduate Dr. Tim Campbell. They will be honored at a reception to be held on January 22nd and formally introduced to the community during a halftime of the Bethel Park High School Boys Basketball Game. Congratulations to our deserving 2016 Hall of Fame inductees. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much. Student government.
Hi, I'm JD Measures, and I'm the junior school board rep for SGA. And currently, we're preparing for the holiday season by putting up decorations in the school and starting events such as our staff appreciation, Secret Santa, excuse me, with just over two weeks until winter break. In other news, we have our birthdays committee, and they're continuing to hand out birthday passes, which allows students to get a free cookie or ice cream when it's their birthday month. And with that said, SGA wishes the school board happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, same to you. PTA/PTO council.
I have the report here, Mrs. Cook, if there's no reps. If I may, okay. The people who are involved in the PTO/PTA council are not only busy with all the things going on in the school, tonight was a busy night with their families, so they sent me the report in case someone didn't come. At Ben Franklin, the Ben PTO had a great month. The Franklin families very generously supported Saris and Mrs. Field sales during the last few weeks. They will host a Cookies With Santa night, where all of the kids will decorate their own cookies and enjoy a make-your-own hot chocolate bar. They will also host a Santa shop, where the children will get the opportunity to shop during their recess times. The third graders will have a visit from Jeff, the geode guy, to see the science behind geodes, and the first graders are putting on a holiday play. Finally, the Ben PTO contributed to the Tri-County EMS Stuff A Truck event and donated almost $200 worth of new toys for children in our community. At Memorial School, they had a spirit night at Chick-fil-A. Many families showed up, including one of the teachers and his family. Their Saris candy fundraiser was a huge success. They sold over $6,700 worth of chocolate. Memorial Holiday Shop took place last week. They also had their Holiday Festival on Thursday, where families were encouraged to bring a food item for SHIM since the event was free. Finally, they are having a Five Below fundraiser this week, ending on Sunday. At William Penn, the PTO had a spirit night at Chick-fil-A on November 19th and raised over $150. The PTO had their Saris candy fundraiser and raised over $1,500. Spirit Night on November 20th, and the students wore their orange and black to show their Bethel Park pride. The William Penn PTO had a regular meeting on November 23rd, where pie and coffee were served. They had a character trait day on Friday, December 4th. This month's trait is respect, and the corresponding color is light green. The students were asked to wear light green on Friday. And on Friday, December 4th, the William Penn PTO held their Polar Express Night. The PTO bought the North Pole to the students. Mr. Lenowski read the book, and Santa came for a visit. Various snacks and hot chocolate was served. There was also a holiday shop that the students could get gifts for various members of their families. The William Penn PTO started their service project the night of Polar Express by asking students to donate PJs to the Ronald McDonald House. The collection will continue the week of December 7th through the 11th for those who are not able to attend. George Washington Elementary, they took ten boxes full of candy and homemade cards to the troops of the Air National Guard, which were deployed overseas during Thanksgiving. They are now sponsoring a shimmering food drive, which will run until December 14th. Donations of non-perishable items are being taken to SHIM. The teachers dropped off six boxes of food. So far, the total is 364 pounds of food donated. In November, the Washington students collected a total of 1,532 box tops. The winning classroom collected 395 box tops and will get 10 minutes of extra recess. The fourth graders had a swim party in November and will be participating in reindeer games next week. Last Friday, the PTO sponsored Cookies With Santa. It was a packed house with over 300 people attending. The children dressed in their Christmas PJs, decorated gingerbread houses, and got their picture taken with Santa. Washington PTO is sponsoring a wish tree to help children in need this holiday season. And this Wednesday, December 9th, George Washington will have its holiday sing-along at 7:00 PM at the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. All are welcome. Moving on to NAMMs, December is a busy month for NAMMs PTO. Along with our three-day Santa shop, we are getting ready for our annual charity carnival. We hope to raise $4,000 this year. As our winter fundraiser, we are working with Pittsburgh Garden in the Hillcrest Shopping Center selling Christmas trees. NAMMs PTO receives a percentage of the profit of trees sold if you mention NAMMs PTO at the register. Although we are busy, we are up to the challenge and happy to do it. So please check out the Pittsburgh Garden in the Hillcrest Shopping Center. And lastly, at IMS, the craft show was a huge success. Thank you to all vendors and crafters for a wonderful show. A special thank you to all the volunteers as well. At IMS, they are currently looking for an eighth-grade parent to head the Bold and Gold Event. If interested, please contact Sharon Kaye at CAYE.sharon@BPHawks.org. Gold will be held on January 22nd, and Bold will be held on February 12th. We are also in need of another eighth-grade parent to co-chair the Eighth Grade Fund Day. They will be in charge of the activities for that day. We have another parent who already volunteered to order all of the food. Any parents interested in working this event, please email the PTO. And that concludes the report for many hard-working people in the district.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Solicitors report.
We have nothing at this time.
Committee report.
We didn't have a meeting, but I'd like to make an announcement publicly so everyone can mark their calendar. The next curriculum meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 13th at 7:00 PM here in this room, and one of the items on the agenda will be more details to discuss with the kindergarten center. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments on agenda items this evening. We're going to do our committee report of the committee meeting of the items next, so you'll probably hear some discussion of some of them. Any comments on agendas? Okay. Moving into Curriculum Committee, there are three items. Any questions on these items?
I have a question about the high school course selection guide and the changes that were emailed to us to take a look at before the meeting. I don't recall in the STEAM presentation where there was any mention of changing the graduation requirements to add a half credit of STEAM as the graduation requirement. I am not in favor of changing graduation requirement by voting on a course selection booklet. I think we need to talk about that. Probably the most appropriate time would be to talk about it in the January curriculum meeting. So I would like to put that item on hold until after the curriculum meeting in January.
I concur with you. I thought there were a lot of items that had financial implications as well as I read through that list.
And also, I don't think that when social studies reported to us, they told us that Level 1 classes in social studies were going to be eliminated.
I think they did talk about that, but I thought we were going to have further discussion about exactly how that was going to occur, rather than just getting it in a course selection guide.
Right, so I would like to take that item off the agenda if that's agreeable and do it after we talk about it at the curriculum meeting.
Right, and we did not pass this item until January last year, and I also believe since we have most everything online, it's not as cumbersome a process to have a discussion, a little further discussion about it.
I agree.
I'd like to add some comments to that as well. I agree with everything Mrs. Dobis has said. I have some concerns as far as the Level 1 being removed and how we're going to address the needs of the students. We have added some classes that are Level 1 to 3, but in World Geography stays Level 1 to 3. But I have some questions about that. I have questions about the impact on the scheduling that will occur with these changes that are being recommended, and the class size, and the amount of employees needed to take care of all of these changes. And what I did, since everybody teases me about being the saver, I pulled out the guides from the last two years and was doing some comparisons. I won't share all of those details tonight, but there's some concerns on my part about some of the changes that are being recommended. Well, thank you.
Can we please add that to the curriculum meeting for the January 13th discussion? And I think we just need a whole lot more detail on a number of those items. Any other questions on items one or three?
I don't know. This falls under curriculum, and it might fall under course selection guide also, but Dr. O'Rourke sent us the test scores from the state in an email and a PowerPoint about that, and it's all Greek to me. I had a hard time looking at it and deciphering it, and whether we're going to be addressing some of our deficiencies as part of the courses in the course selection guide, or whether we can have a verbal oral presentation about those scores and what happened in terms of the drop.
Yeah.
That concerns me a great deal.
So can we add that to the curriculum meeting? Thank you.
It's going to be a long curriculum.
It is. We might want to start at 4:30.
We might want to start a little earlier than we usually. When do we start at 7:00?
Instead of 7:00, can we start at 6:00?
Yeah.
We're also going to give you a Chrome training that evening, too.
Oh, that evening, too?
Yes.
So we are probably starting at 6:00.
Yeah, so we're already starting. We can pull the board and see how early we can start.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay, moving on to Personnel Committee. Any questions on any of the eight items on Personnel Committee? I'm good to go with all those? Okay, we have one under Facilities and Services Committee. Mr. Howard, is this number only the temp fix number? This is the temporary fix for the winter months?
Oh, for the facility?
Yes.
Yes, just temporary, it's just a temporary fix.
So...
Not fixed, it's called a remediation, temporary remediation.
I mean, it seems kind of expensive to me, but I don't know what would your guesstimate be of a permanent remediation?
I wouldn't even start to make that estimate right now.
Okay. And when will we...
It's not going to be $10,000, it's not going to be in the tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay. And when will we have more information on that?
Soon as we get this stabilization and remediation work done, we're going to go ahead and do the core samples. Once we do the core samples, the engineer will then report back to the board his findings and with recommendations. So hopefully, early winter, January, February, we'll have that information to prepare documents or court, I should say, to prepare course of action at that time.
How long would we estimate that this temporary remediation would...
Only through...
Just through the winter months?
Just through the winter. So, I mean, it could last longer, but we'd like to keep this process moving and get, hopefully, come to some...
Definitive.
To some process for the summer of 2016.
Going to be a busy summer, huh?
It's going to be a busy summer.
Any other, anybody else have any other questions on that item? Then we're on to Finance Committee. Any questions on the five items on finance? Then we have one discussion item. Mr. Means, would you like to?
Sure. On the discussion item?
Yes, the three-year budget projection.
Yeah, the state budget is in flux right now, and a lot of things are going on. We have, we also have some contracts that we're in the process of, we have to start negotiating. And I think, and I think some of the other board members feel that we need a three-year projection of what our fixed costs are. And we need, not necessarily the fixed cost, but the cost that we know what they are, and we need to be able to project those out. Now, some of the contracts are going to be negotiated, or they run out before the end of three years. So I think it would be good to see them projected as a number at the present contract, as a present contract level, so the board could take a look at that and say, well, you know, if we increase them by half a percent or two and a half percent, we could put it out and take it what it was. But the thing is, we've been negotiating contracts individually, and we need to see the big picture of what our overall costs are going to be and how much money we have to deal with and how much money maybe we don't have to deal with. So I don't know what other things people would like to add, but I think that's a basic outline of what we'd like to say.
Yeah, and I think because we have to have the budget process due to the state, and we have to begin it in January, I think when we start that in January, it might be a good time to start that, to come with that information for us then.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a large part of the budget that's fixed, it's already determined based on the contracts. We should be able to extend that out and then identify what are the potential variables that'll change over the next three years, and then you can run a couple of different scenarios as we begin the budget process.
Like Barry said, 75% of our costs are contracts in salaries and benefits, so we should be able to project those out fairly accurately. And like I said, if a contract runs out, project it out for what the last rate was, and then the board can play with those numbers and say, you know, what if we do this, what if we do that? And then we can look and see how all the pieces of the pie fit together, because I think we're going to get ourselves into a bind if we keep negotiating and looking at things individually without seeing the big picture and how all these things tie together.
Yeah, I would say that a big part that we know is going to change that is going to be somewhat dynamic over the next three years is pension contributions. So what happens, the overall budget, as we know that scales up in addition to the increases in the, you know, agreed-upon contract amounts.
Healthcare also.
Healthcare, and there we should be able to make an assumption, because, you know, you can assume it's going up everywhere, and it'll continue to.
I think the budget projections are actually pretty firm.
Yeah.
Not the budget, the, I meant to say the pension projections are pretty firm, what percentage they're going to be.
And we've even had maybe some discussions that at some point, maybe looking at a zero base budgeting process so that we can get a better handle on what we're actually spending where, where the sacred cows are, those types of things. So we need to look at everything. A lot of the schools are starting to look at that, to use, you know, so...
I mean, when you, you know, in concept, I think all our budgets are zero-based budgets. We do start over every year with all of our... We do start over every year with all, with all of our, not with all of our amounts. We look at, you know, all of our utilities, all of our supplies, and we, with our contracts that are fixed, those we, we know, and so they're, they're at zero base budgeting just to begin with, so. You know, I think we do do zero base budgeting to some level. We do, maybe do have some leniency with that, with some of our budget numbers that we give to the schools, but that's probably one percent of what the budget is in itself, so, I mean, a lot of our budget is, is so fixed that it's considered zero.
I guess we haven't understood that. I mean, we've never, as a board, seen, you know, how you go through that process from zero based, so I think that's what we need to look at.
I think buzzy can, I'm speaking for you, but I think you could definitely touch on that in the, in the budget presentation, on how we, how we do do that, and how we, you know, we take every special needs student, and we look at them every year, and we start over with every special needs student, and prepare a list, and make sure we have that. We just don't throw a budget number at that, so.
I think you can understand, given the state of Harrisburg, and we as a board are feeling that.
Sure.
And I think that it just brings us back around to, you know, as I saw that the vote went twenty-four, twenty-four, and they could just have easily have passed...
Yeah, no more state.
One, you know what I mean? So I think it just opened our eyes a little bit to saying we're maybe not as comfortable as we once were feeling not...
Well, and the point of putting together a long-term view is just to be prepared, because let's say this delays another month or two or three, we still have to put together a budget, and we have to be able to react very quickly based on a large number of potential outcomes for funding, and so we better have at least what we know together, so we can, you know, evaluate those scenarios very quickly.
We need the facts.
I mean, just, I mean, just two, one comment and then one question. Such a large part of our budget is salaries and benefits.
Right, right.
So it is so contingent on how we, or what's available for us to prepare a three-year budget is what contracts are settled. Given that our largest contract, our teacher's contract, will not be settled, it will, will be open at the end of this year, that'll be a larger, a large assumption we'll have to deal with in this process, and I understand what Jim said, we can, we'll start with, we'll probably start with no raises at all and work our way up from there. Matt, I want to, I want to stop you right there. I don't think we want to project a zero, a one percent, a two percent, a three percent. I think we want it based at the present, at the, at the level of the last year of the contract. If we start to project...
That's what I, yeah.
But no, you were saying, you know, projected a one percent and two percent, but...
I'm saying that we could, once we went from zero, we could go...
No, I don't, I don't think we want to do that, because we start to get to the point where we're starting to, to put negotiation information out in public, and we don't want to do that. So keep it at the, at the level of the last contract, and the board will play with the numbers behind the...
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Behind the closed doors. The other thing is, I think you guys have done a good job in sort of zero base budgeting, but there are a lot of things that are totally fixed. Like, we know we're gonna have to use a certain amount of paper, we know we're gonna have to have certain utility bills, certain gas bills, equipment, maintenance, stuff like that. There are other things which are important, but they aren't quite as tight. I know Janet has a budget for, you know, innovating curriculum and stuff like that, so I think we would like to be able to separate the items that are absolutely base, bottom dollar, this is what we have to spend with, from the things that, this is what we would like to spend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far, I mean, and we're, as far as timeline, is it, is it good that we just incorporate this into the budget process then?
That's why we're bringing it to your point, because we are entering the budget process right now, I think.
Buzzy, you crunch the numbers, and you've been solid over there, so what are you thinking?
Well, we, I mean, we, I did start working on the budget, but I get pulled off of that a lot now because we're down one person. So I get a good start on it, and then I gotta go back to the accounting part of my job now, and then I gotta start over and pick it up. So it takes about, it takes about two or three weeks straight to do, to get away from the budget process and do the accounting work, then I get back to the budget process. It's kinda, it's difficult to get, it's gonna be very difficult for me to do a three-year budget the way it is right now. I'm gonna have trouble having a one-year budget budget anyway.
Okay.
Okay? When Rob was here, doing a three-year budget for me by January wasn't a bad problem, but it's definitely a big problem. I'm not saying I can't, I'm just saying it's gonna be tough, I'll give it a shot.
No, I appreciate your honesty. I'd like to point out one other thing, and that's, we have a preliminary budget, which is due end of January is what the deadline is, and we may be required to, to have a projected, at least a preliminary budget for next year, before this year's budget has even been settled in terms of the state contributions and everything, so...
That's right. Serious issue.
We have to, actually, we have to have a preliminary budget done by January seventh. You guys don't have to approve it until the January board meeting, but we have to have it done and available for public inspection by January seventh, so...
So we know that it is kind of a ridiculous budget that gets presented in January seventh, because we have no numbers to even work from. A lot of unknowns, yeah. Crazy process. Well, it would be our hope that you would work towards that. I understand the time constraints that we're under, et cetera, but if you could, yeah, in that spare time, start to work it out.
If you want a realistic three-year budget, it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a while.
Do you have any idea, do you have any idea how long that, that would be?
I don't, to be honest.
Okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I was just, okay?
It would just be our wish to get a handle on things like that, so if we could work towards that as you, as you can fit that in, we would greatly appreciate that. Anybody else? Any other questions on finance or on that discussion item? I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items, and we are adopting the agenda minus item number two under the Curriculum Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held December first, two thousand and fifteen for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and to receive information; December third, two thousand and fifteen for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and to receive information; and December eighth, two thousand and fifteen for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and to receive information. Any public comments on the agenda items that have now been moved to our business meeting? So that means we are going to vote on these items at this point in time. Okay, we'll move into our business meeting, Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are now two items under curriculum. I move number one, the January graduation list, and number two, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America FCC LA State Leadership Conference and Competition, Gettysburg, PA, March fifteenth to the eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
I need a second.
Second.
Good. Items one and now three renamed two have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on these two items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are eight items under Personnel. One, approval of substitutes. Two, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Three, change of assignment. Four, approval of staffing changes. Five, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. And six, approval of paid intern. Seven, acceptance of a resignation. Eight, appointment of personnel. I move that we adopt these items.
Second.
Items one through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Means, would you take that for me this evening?
Yes, I will. There is one item under Facilities and Service, Services. I know I would like to move that the approval of the proposal for drainage installation.
Second.
Item one under Facilities and Services Committee has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Dobis. Any questions on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
Yes, we have our five items under the Finance Committee. Would anybody one of these held up for discussion? Hearing none, I move items one through five. Number one being the November two thousand and fifteen salaries and bills. Number two being the bill list for the December two thousand and fifteen meeting. Number three, the October two thousand and fifteen financial report. Number four, budgetary transfers. And number five, AIU Joint Purchasing Board.
Second.
Items one through five under Finance have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Dobis. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. We are to the portion of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
My name's Joe Johns, I live at twenty-six ninety-nine Bethel Crest Drive. I want to take the opportunity to follow up on my comments from the October twenty-eighth meeting and my subsequent email to you on November ninth regarding increasing the pay of our coaches within our school district. As you will recall, my request had four items to be addressed: establish an equitable pay scale for all coaches, produce that scale at current market rates, further improve that scale to be competitive with school districts with top athletic programs, and four, allow for administrative prerogative to hire, replace coaches without regard to a candidate's affiliation with the teachers' union. I realize that all these items have the potential to be bargained for in the upcoming negotiations with the teachers' union for the two thousand and sixteen contract. So again, I am persistent with my request to the board to get in front of this issue and perform the necessary initial due diligence to quantify the financial impact of each of these items to the general budget. I have reviewed my requests with colleagues of other Bethel Park School District booster programs, and I asked them to be in attendance tonight, but the nature of the season, I think they're out with the PTO folks tonight, so, anyway, they do support my interest to pique your interest, to acquire more information, and be better prepared to address these items during the contract negotiations. The folks that I've talked to are Bruce Thompson from the girls' soccer program, Bill Ronco from the boys' soccer program, Jessica Magu from the boys' volleyball program, Bill Zilcoski from the girls' lacrosse program, and Brian Wallace from the boys' lacrosse program. Each of them were CC'd in my email to you with this narrative that I sent you earlier at, at the end of last week. Please know that although these colleagues represent the sports whose coaches are on the lower end of the scale, they agree that all coaches deserve to have their pay increased to an equitable current market and competitive rate. No coach should take a reduction in pay. Thank you again for the opportunity, opportunity to address this important issue, and thank you again for your future-focused leadership related to academics, facilities, and athletics for our school district.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping in that two-minute timeframe, that was good.
He's actually back in the seat by the end of the two minutes.
Anyone else?
Laura Waterstrand, five-nine-three-five Keystone Drive. Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask you again to reconsider the current district transportation policy regarding childcare centers. Not all childcare centers are created equal, and I will tell you that the childcare options we are given in our elementary attendance zone are not equal to our chosen childcare provider. Why, why is it that the district can limit the childcare options for families based solely on attendance zones? And if the policies delimit families to childcare centers within the zones, then I'd like an explanation, please, as to why two centers in the district receive transportation to and from, as to to and from, two of the five elementary schools, not just the one in which they are geographically aligned? And why are families in forty percent of the zones in the district, both Franklin and Memorial, told that they cannot receive transportation to and from centers that are accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children? I understand that this is a requirement of the state that you provide transportation to and from the non-public schools, anywhere within a ten-mile radius of the district's boundaries, for any student who resides in Bethel Park and enrolls outside of the district. What sort of message is this sending to parents who desire a public school option within their own district? The message that we hear is send your child to a public, to a private school, and you will receive the transportation to the childcare option of your choice. Choose to participate in the public school option, and you're gonna be limited to certain childcare centers on your, within your attendance zone. If the district's going to provide freedom of choice to those who enroll in non-public programs, then you need to afford the same freedom of choice to parents who desire a public education within their home district. Again, in two thousand and twelve, when this change occurred, the, it was cited in the Chronicles as a savings of thirty to forty thousand dollars. The budget at that time was over seventy-three million, and that translates to a point zero five four percent of the budget, some savings, and a large disruption to families in the district. I ask you now, how is it that we can become involved as parents? What, what can we do to be a part of this dialogue? What needs to happen in order for this policy to be reconsidered? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Paula Kaufman Oberle, and I live at one-eleven Santa Fe Drive, and this is my first board meeting. And I am here also to speak about choice for transportation for childcare facilities. I do feel that I am limited in the choices that I have for what childcare facility I would like to send my child to, based on the current policy, and I would like there to be discussion about that, to possibly revise or change that. I equally have concerns about this, and I know that there are others as well, but I don't have such an eloquent speech presented or ready, but I have to tell you that I cried the day that I learned that I would have to choose a different childcare center for my son, because I spent a lot of time finding the childcare center that I wanted to send him to, and then when I found out that busing wouldn't be provided to him, I was just so upset. So, please, consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I want to ask if you would mind something about that. Oh, sure. I'm John Waterstrand, five-nine-three-five Keystone Drive. Good evening. I'd like to briefly speak tonight about the childcare transportation issue, and respectfully ask for the board's reconsideration of this policy. Others have given many reasons, including our previously stated email to all of you, as to why this policy needs to be reconsidered, but today I want to focus solely on budgetary concerns. According to the most recent figures that I can find published, there were approximately a hundred and thirty-five students using the childcare transportation bus service provided by Bethel Park, at an annual cost of between thirty and forty thousand. This represents an annual transportation cost of approximately two hundred and ninety-six dollars per student. In contrast, according to Superintendent Rose, Bethel Park is required to pay approximately ten thousand dollars for each of the almost eighty students who attend cyber and charter schools each year, a total cost of approximately eight hundred thousand. There have been little to no reimbursements by Pennsylvania since the two thousand and ten, eleven school year. In addition, Bethel Park is also required to provide transportation to these students and pay for employer pensions at other types of schools, including child, cyber, and charter. Pension payments are only reimbursed at fifty percent by the state. Board member, Mr. Means, previously noted that additional costs of managing appropriate staffing to compensate for lower attendance also creates a havoc when projecting costs. When we learned of the current transportation policy, a charter school was one of the first options that we examined, and obviously, there is a significant savings in transportation through the district than the large costs associated with sending children to cyber and charter schools. Any of these would be attractive when we talk about alternatives, which I will be happy to share with you via email. One includes a, an enrollment exchange, one-to-one, for children who are in certain elementary schools and certain who are in others, to help keep a neutral enrollment. Also, I would think that some parents would be willing to cover the cost of approximately three hundred or even more in a leasing situation similar... Also, I would think that some parents would be willing to cover the cost, uh, of approximately three hundred or even more in a leasing situation similar to what's been done with Lois Johnson for pre and aftercare. Uh, sorry, I yielded a little extra time. Um, I'll be happy to forward my comments via email, uh, to all of you, but I do think there are some alternatives that we buzz at budget, net neutral, or net positive to the district, which in this year is always important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And the Board of eighty, thirty-six eighty, Action Drive. Um, first of all, I would like to commend and thank Mrs. Dobus for bringing up the information on the course selection guide. I know other board members agreed with her comments. I also agree with her comments. This isn't the first time that significant changes have been introduced via the course selection guide. Um, I'm not saying that it's intentional, but it's certainly important that decisions such as graduation requirements should be discussed by the board before these things enter the course selection guide. And I'm glad that you're gonna have the opportunity to review it and talk about all of these changes that rightfully belong in the board's position, separate from the course selection guide. So I, I do commend Mrs. Dobus and the rest of the board for agreeing to that. I also thank, um, the three-year budget projection discussion. What's good? Obviously, from some comments from these, the other people who spoke tonight, it's something that will be beneficial. I know it won't be easy. I know we don't have much money to discuss because of the contractual obligations, but I do think it's a step in the right direction, and I'm glad that it's going to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll move into board comments. Mr. Amadis, I think I'm down at your end.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank all the audience members for participating here this evening. And in light of, uh, how some of our statewide and national political figures are handling the discard as, discourse as of late, I really want to thank you for the way you approached the board on it, and to let you know that I appreciate that, and that's how change will be effective, one way or another, through discourse and through the process that you've involved in. And, uh, so anyway, and other than that, I just want to, uh, again, considering all the things that are going on out there, I just want to, uh, wish a Merry Christmas to everybody, not only here in Bethel Park, but around the country and the world, and a happy holiday, however you, however you choose to celebrate and whatever you choose to celebrate. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Workmeister.
Yes, first time I get to speak. First, I'd like to thank everybody for that, that ad vote for me. I will do my best here on the fine board that we have to try to, you know, make sure that I, uh, meet your expectations. I also know that I'm very proud of being in Bethel Park. Uh, it's, I think, the best school district, but some numbers show some others are a little better, but I don't believe that, but nonetheless, that's what, one of my goals is to be here. And we have, I want to congratulate all the people that we were seeing up on the board here from, uh, uh, Mrs. O'Rourke, uh, about the, uh, the Hall of Famers and all those students that had a lot of good success. So, uh, that's what it's about, and I, I'm glad to see people here in the audience. I've gone to a lot of, uh, school board meetings where the seats were pretty empty. I mean, like, like two people in there, so. It is good that you spread the word to make sure that, uh, more involvement, just like Mr. Amadis said, that by you speaking up here, it helps us learn a little bit more on the facts and that, so, uh, encourage more people to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen.
Uh, I gotta say, from the, uh, uh, staff report and the student successes, I love that sea perch, okay? That is a, such a great, uh, example of how, uh, students are working together collaboratively, solving technical problems. Very hands-on learning and, and great, uh, I imagine when they finish, great gratification regarding the technology and what they've designed, so I think that's a fantastic, uh, fantastic project, so it really, uh, hits home to the engineer in me.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
I just want to remind everybody that our DECA students have done a great job at decorating their trees. This year, we have seventeen trees up. Uh, each of them represent a different theme. A lot of them, uh, chose the, the theme around the sponsor of the tree, and I want to direct you to BPTV. They'll be running them. On BPTV, you can vote for the tree of your choice and then make a donation, and, uh, the trees that get the most, they will go back to the clubs, and then you get the tree. If you have the, uh, most amount of donations in their particular tree, then you will get the tree all decorated. So I ask you to go to BPTV, and it's been a lot of fun working with the students. Um, Andy Emery and, um, Dave Cable just did that on Monday, so it should be ready to go, I think, by the end of the week.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Uh, I would like to thank all of the teachers, the staff members, the children and their parents and the families for their involvement as far as the staff report. Thank you, Ms. O'Rourke, for putting that together tonight. I, to me, that was impressive, the variety of topics and how many people it impacted, so I especially enjoyed that. Also, I'd like to thank the folks in the audience as well, and hope to see more people coming on a regular basis, not just when you have something on, uh, a concern list of yours. We respect that, but please come. We, we need people here. I hope there will be lots of people in attendance at the curriculum meeting on January 13th. We have many important things to discuss. And lastly, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Means.
Me too. Uh, seriously, the, um, with regards to the, the busing situation and the, um, um, childcare, I'd like to say that I think all of us are sympathetic, uh, towards what you're asking. But I would like to point out again, um, when you start talking about cyber school and pension reimbursements and things like that, so much of our budget is, is already fixed either through contract or state mandate or federal mandate that we really do not have nearly as much to play with as you would think we would. So, uh, we are sympathetic and, and, uh, I don't, I don't know what we can do about it, but we'll, I think we'll all take a look at it. The other thing I'd just like to say, you know, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, and thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobus.
Um, I also, um, were, I was so pleased with all the reports that were made, um, today about the students and so forth, and how well we're doing. And I would like to thank the audience for coming and for your comments. Um, and in particular, um, Mr. Johns, I, I appreciate your, uh, research and your, your comments about the coaches' salaries, and I don't think we're in the business of comparing salaries with other districts. Um, I think that's a fallacy, but I think we do want to remain competitive, um, in that area, so as we prepare for, um, negotiations and so forth, I hope that we would, um, ask, um, our athletic department and, and our business department and so forth to, um, gather that information that you've talked about so that we're prepared when we go into that with, with those numbers and so forth. It only makes sense to me to, to be prepared in that way. And, um, in terms of the other comments about the daycare situation, um, having had two children who were transported from daycares during the times that they needed to be transported to whatever school was, uh, in our area, I have to admit, I'm completely sympathetic with what you're talking about. I don't think that we should be in the business of forcing children or parents to, um, choose a daycare based on the fact that it's in a particular geographical location. I just don't, I, 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 I find that unconscionable. Um, but, uh, still, we have financial considerations that we have to, um, take a look at, but I thought the point that you made about, um, spending, do we want to spend ten thousand dollars on a charter school or a cyber school, or do we want to pay two hundred and ninety-six dollars for the, um, busing, uh, is it, makes complete sense to me also. So as we move forward with our budget process, as you've heard, it happens in January, February, March, and so forth, I hope that we also, uh, will take a look at that, um, and the cost of that very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's really hard. Um, when I first got on the board, this discussion started, um, many times, and I noticed you had some articles even in here where, um, we did not take action on it. We, we continued to push it off. And quite frankly, I was one of the ones who said, "It, it can't be that much to, why can't we take kids wherever?" Um, the reality of the situation got to be, you know, the monies just weren't there. And, uh, we are not mandated to bus. Um, Peter's Township only buses kindergarten students one way. The reason that we went into the attendance areas was because we're ma, when we do bus, we bus from home to school and back to home. So when we looked at the bus routes, um, that was the area we were going in. When you ask about a couple of the locations, and I know I was out at one of them, actually, the buses for the two schools cross at that, at the location, so the bus does actually pass by one on King School, I think, and one on 88 at, at a particular location. So that is why, um, when we were approached at, at a point in time saying, "Why are we not?", that, that was the reason that that was. Um, we certainly, through our budget process, and we do, we take a look at a lot of things, um, and that would, that can certainly be an area that we would take another look at. We can all sympathize with you. We've all had children through the district. We've all had children, you know, in, in busing situations, whether it was just to our home and whether or not the bus was gonna drop at home, or whether it was gonna drop, uh, three streets down from home, et cetera, et cetera. In the end, it boils down to, yeah, we do have to finally make a decision, and sometimes the decisions that we make are very tough, and, and they aren't always what satisfies every single person in our district, unfortunately. Again, we have a lot to consider with this budget process, and we have not much money to cons, as part of the budget process. Certainly, uh, I believe it's up to seventy-five percent now is out of our control. It's basically, um, contractual and/or, um, pension health-related issues. But again, you know, we, we do appreciate you coming out, and, and your information is very, um, uh, on target. Also, Mr. Johns, the information you gave us, um, again, certainly, we'd like to have a magical pot of money that we could give everyone increases, uh, like what you're talking about. Um, it, it will boil, that, boil down to some hard decisions when it comes down to negotiating and also to the budget process.
Mrs. Cook.
So on a lighter note, I want to say Merry Christmas.
Can I, can I add one other thing to what you said? That, that, uh, I don't know if you know, but we have trouble filling all the bus positions. I mean, recruiting bus drivers is one of the problems we have, so that's another, another thing that we have to consider also.
Yeah, the amount of bus runs that we can, we can logistically do as well. But anyway, I want to say Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you all for coming, and be safe. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.